Friends, we're going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM on June the 4th, 2018. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members, excuse me, CO Dylan Girba, McClellan Mitchell, and Mayor Pro Tem Tahar. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, DPW Director Fordice, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, Treasurer Bennett, and Police Chief Hart. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we encourage you to sign in the back to my left. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. As submitted, Ms. Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Seconded by Ms. McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We come now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please come forward to the podium.
Mary Hesse. I notice that it appears with dates for ballots that you may be thinking about putting something as far as a bill towards us. I would like to have, and will keep for the copy, I would like to have our total indebtedness. I mean, I'm talking about retirement, disposal, water, I'm thinking at least 20 million. But I would like to have the knowledge of what our total indebtedness is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hesse. Are there additional citizen comments? No additional citizen comments. Then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. So first, you should have received with the agenda for tonight's meeting a spreadsheet with numbers that was prepared by the treasurer's office. Then there are some tables. I think there are four different options, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Fordice. Is that correct?
Correct.
Those were prepared by the Department of Public Works. And then finally, there's a brief memo from the city manager's office discussing dates for when a potential ballot proposal could be placed on the ballot for our voters to consider. Let me provide just a little bit of context before I turn it over to staff for their presentation this evening. I think it's been a couple months since we last addressed this issue, and it was actually at a meeting I was unable to attend, or, excuse me, I exited early because I was not feeling well. It was the meeting where we had a vote on a change order for the odor abatement project, and then we proceeded to discuss our strategic goals and objectives, but also talked about infrastructure. And I remember connecting with the city manager just a few days later. He indicated it was a very good, robust discussion, and that the consensus appeared to be to do a pay-as-you-go system for road maintenance as opposed to incurring additional debt. So with that consensus, staff went to work to compile some data that they thought would be relevant and interesting to you. As City Manager Campbell messaged in his weekly communique, we met last Thursday to go over this. The information is, I mean, it takes a bit of time to absorb, for lack of a better way to articulate it. So this evening, you'll hear a presentation from the city manager, city treasurer, DPW director. We'll have ample time for questions. I will not be looking for consensus this evening. Rather, I will be adding this as a discussion item at the conclusion of our next regular council meeting, which gives you an additional two weeks to ask questions or to inquire through the city manager's office if you request additional information. Because I've had an opportunity to meet with the DPW director, city manager, and city treasurer in advance of tonight's meeting, I will not have any questions. I've exhausted all my questions. They've been addressed or incorporated into the analysis and report that you're about to discuss. However, at the conclusion of tonight's meeting or towards the end of our work meeting, I will be providing some opinions on how best to move forward, which I think will be important as a starting off point for our discussion two weeks from now. So unless there are questions from me, Mr. Campbell, is there anything you'd like to add at this time? Very good. Ms. Bennett, let's do this. Let's start with you. If you want to go over your portion of this analysis, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Fordice, and at the conclusion of your remarks, if Mr. -- your remarks and Mr. Fordice's remarks, excuse me, if Mr. Rubel doesn't have anything he'd like to add, then we will work our way around the dais with questions.
Okay.
And again, for everyone's, just so everyone's clear, please be sure to speak into the mic. Make sure your microphone is working. We are recording this, and I believe it's being livestreamed as well.
All right. So we're going to start with the spreadsheet that is the very first page of attached to your agenda. So based on our 2019 taxable values, I have went through and calculated what a quarter of a mil, a half a mil, three quarters, one, should be one and a quarter, one and a half, 1.75 and two mils. I guess I dropped a decimal point when I was formatting there. But anyway, that's what would generate based on our current taxable value and our current IFTs. Then we go down and we look at our FY '19 budget, and we show what we are getting currently from Washtenaw County Road Millage. You'll see we get a half a mil. So our total that we receive is, well, our total that our taxpayers are paying is $217,371.50. Out of that, 80% of that money can go towards the roads, and we submit invoices for any of the roads we do to improve the roads. It can't go just for maintenance. And then the county reimburses that, and that's $173,897.20. That's the number in bold. The 20%, which is also paid by the taxpayers and goes towards the, to the county, is for the county parks' non-motorized plan, and I believe the staff is working on a program to get that money back. We're going to do a large program instead of doing it each individual year. Then if you go further down on this spreadsheet, you see our Act 51 revenue. That's the money that comes from the state of Michigan from the weight and gas taxes. You'll see that we collect $621,863 in our major. A third of that, those proceeds, are what goes towards constructions and design. The balance of those funds go for maintenance, road maintenance, like clearing the snow, the leaves, not the leaves so much, but clearing the roads and maintaining our current roads. Local streets program, you'll see a total of $218,181. And based on this year's budget, sorry, that doesn't even cover our $650,000 local street budget. So we have to require more for major streets to come into local streets to help cover and close that local streets budget. So that's my pretty data. That's the hard cold facts. So do we want to give it to Jeff now?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just want to elaborate a little bit on the third that's available for construction and design of streets. So the rest of that money goes, the two-thirds that isn't available for construction, goes for general maintenance and snow clearing. So there's a lot of personnel costs in there. Our crack filling program is in that, restriping of the roads, redoing pavement markings, sign replacements. All of those very much annual maintenance needs are in that other two-thirds, along with a lot of the maintenance staff personnel costs. If you go to the next page, I've prepared, you've seen some of these similar things in the past where I've done the road condition modeling. We keep track of our road conditions using a Pazer system. It's a system that allows you to rate the roads and the distresses of them based on their visual appearance, and then track that through time. And within the program, Roadsoft that we use, there are modeling capabilities so you can predict what condition your road network will be in in future years. And then you can put different maintenance scenarios into that and see how effective they are. So this is, you know, it's interesting in that it starts with actual Celine data and then uses models to project that into the future. So we're starting at a very real place, and then we get into computer models. So there's, you know, it's pretty solid. It's based on a lot of research, but it's not like a per-road, you know, each individual guarantee, you know, that North Ann Arbor Street's going to be a two in five years. It's, this is a network-wide analysis based on standardized deterioration rates. So the first one is not anything we would propose to do. It's just for reference, how the condition of our road network would degrade if we didn't do any more construction. So we, you know, continue to do pothole patching and crack filling and things like that, but not any actual repaving type work. And it drops pretty significantly. This is a 10-year projection. We go from a four and a half down to just over a two. 10, well, 10 is brand-new, and within the Pazer system, a road can only be a 10 for one year. So it's, you build it brand-new, it's a 10, one year later, it's a nine, no matter what. That's just how the Pazer definitions work. So then I looked at what kind of dollar investment level would be necessary to just kind of hold us steady. And that's the second chart there. This is an annual investment of $400,000. And so, you know, just again, start at a four and a half, bounce around a little bit, end at a 4.9, pretty much in the same condition. And then I looked at two scenarios to improve the condition of our street network. The next one is a $900,000 annual investment, and that, again, started at four and a half. After 10 years, we're at a six and a half. And then similarly, there's a $1.25 million scenario below that one that ends us one point higher at seven and a half. And again, I want to emphasize that these dollar amounts are not the total street budget. These are, this is the construction budget. This is money going into the pavement. This is not, you know, this is not personnel costs. This is not equipment costs. This is not snow plowing. This is construction. And another point I want to make is that even though the system-wide average is going up very nicely in these two scenarios, if you look into the data charts there down towards the bottom in the, in like the 4, 3, 2, 1 range, you'll see there's a chunk of 10 to 15 miles of roadway that just sort of hang in there, and they degrade a little bit each year, and they still are lingering with us. And even in year nine, 2027, there's still 18 miles of really bad roads. There's a lot, you know, over 50 miles of excellent roads, but because of the nature of pavement deterioration and what methods you have available, some of these roads are just going to continue to get worse until we catch up to them probably in year 11 or 12. So while our network-wide average will be going up, we'll have a lot of great roads, there still will be this lingering handful of miles of bad roads.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Fordice?
I think that's it.
Mr. Rubel, is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion this evening?
Just a few things.
Oh, make sure you get the microphone from Mr. Fordice.
Thank you. Just a few things here, Mayor. Besides the major and local, I mean, we do have front line maintenance contract with the state, and we get reimbursed for that, but not always full reimbursement. Sometimes we have ancillary cost or extra cost on that. The enhancement of the revenue and the revenue, the fact that the revenue is available is also needed to leverage the state and federal grants, for instance, the urban program, category F program that pays a set amount, but you still need to match. And then any other type of new programs that either the state legislature or federal legislature is talking about for grant or matching programs. So in the case that those are initiated in the next few years, you'd want to have some revenue. These opportunities would like to see some commitment or some evidence that we do intend to provide leverage balancing funds. And then I just, apparently, the five mil program with the county is, this has, is three years left.
Any additional comments from staff at this time? Then, Mr. CO, I'll start with you. Questions for city manager, DPW director, city treasurer, or city engineer?
On your sheet, the local streets, local road program, what's the source of revenue for those funds, the $218,000?
The local road program is also part of the Act 51. It's a special program that was, the funding was approved 10 years ago. I think that is going to sunset, but I don't know exactly. They said that last year. I'm not exactly sure when that sunsets. But that's in addition to, through federal funds that were allocated.
Okay. So if I read all of these documents correctly, we would have to ask for an additional two mils in the general fund taxable value to meet the dramatically improved category. Is that right?
Brian, do you want to go over your math that you did?
I'm happy to do that. So, Mr. Seal's benefit for the rest of the councils, and this will sort of segue into what my opinion is on how we proceed. And staff can correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have the sheets that I was referencing this past Thursday when we met. So I had to do my arithmetic again. But I, all right, so I start up at the top with one mil, and I rounded down with all these figures, which gets me $434,000. Then I add in the $173,000 that we get from Washtenaw County. And then, as it relates to Act 51 dollars referencing just major streets, I took one-third of that $621,000 amount, actually a little bit less, $200,000. I didn't include local at all. And that gets me 800, just over 800,000, 807,000 according to my math. So that certainly does not get us to dramatically improving our network of roads, Mr. CO. It does get us closer to improve as opposed to maintain, and that, that 800,000-plus figure does not take into account federal grants. It doesn't take into account utilizing a portion of our unrestricted fund balance, which is what we're going to be doing this year, excuse me, to resurface some of our roads. It also doesn't take into account if or when the state government, the governor or legislature will act on providing additional revenue for road maintenance to municipalities. And again, I would reference that article, that op-ed that I distributed probably a month, two months ago in Bridge Magazine, that basically said that the way that we provide services locally, in particular, infrastructure funding, it is not a sustainable model to expect that local jurisdictions assume all of that cost, all that responsibility.
Okay.
That was a bit long-winded and complicit.
No, I understand.
I apologize. I'll provide some context and--
Thank you.
The questions you have.
Mr. Fordice, how many total miles of roads? Is that like 70?
It's 33 centerline, these are in lane miles.
Okay. So I guess what I did was I tried to go down the list on the right under 2028 and add all those numbers together, know the number of miles at each of those Pazer values. So you got about 54 miles in the first three categories, and down toward the bottom, I'm on the improve spreadsheet. Another 7.1 for Pazer 2 and 9.2 for Pazer 1. And then what does that last, 6.5?
That's the average Pazer value.
Ah, okay. All right. So would, am I not correct then, if you add the Pazer 10 through Pazer 1, miles, you should come up with the--
Yeah, 70, 70.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
You're good for now, Mr. Seal. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is that--
Take Mr. Seal's.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could you, would you--
Real close now.
Would you mind kiss the mic? That's what we call it, kiss the mic. Would you mind repeating those figures one more time? You start off by saying the 434,000--
So I took the revenue generated from one mil but rounded down--
Okay.
To 434,000.
Uh-huh.
Then I added 173,000, which is 80% of the Washtenaw County Road Millage that we receive for road projects--
Okay.
--resurfacing initiatives. And then I took slightly less than one-third of the $621,000 plus amount for major streets via Act 51 revenue.
Okay. I appreciate--
That got me to 807,000.
Okay. I just, I just couldn't quite write fast enough to keep up with--
Quite right.
So that helps. So I have a question for Mr. Fordice and possibly Mr. Campbell. Mr. Fordice, I think you said, I'm looking at the improve chart, and I think you said that $900,000 scenario was only for construction, not design, or--
Yeah. Basically, road projects. So, you know, the pavement, the design, the management, the, you know, that's kind of the whole ball of wax. But it's not, it's not snow plowing, it's not annual maintenance, it's not pothole patching, it's not signs, it's--
I see.
Road projects.
Okay. And normally, when we, is that normally when we're working, we're looking at numbers, we take all of it together? We fold in the plowing? Is that what you're saying?
I'm making that distinction--
Or that's just an FYI?
Well, to clarify, that you could go back to Mickey Joe's chart and say, oh, well, we've got 174 from the county, we've got 600 from the state, and another 200 from the state. What's the problem?
Right.
The problem is that those dollar figures cover things other than construction.
So you're saying if I, if I look at that 900,000, it's like buying a car but not taking into consideration the insurance for it? There are other costs. If we, if we look at that 900,000, what, what would the additional costs look like? Do you have an idea?
Um--
I can't remember from our budget discussion.
Yeah, they would be basically the local and major routine maintenance and winter maintenance line items--
Okay.
--which are somewhere around $600,000.
That really helps. I'm hoping that we can do at least the improve. If not, you know, I mean, it's certainly on my Christmas list to do the, the final one, because I've heard a lot of citizens that dramatically approve, improve, I've heard a lot of citizens really discuss roads as being a priority. But I have been beating that dead horse throughout this entire budget process, so I'll pass on that.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dylan?
Okay, I think I'm going to be very short because a few of my questions have already been answered. So as far as the Washtenaw County Millage, that's got three years. So then are we looking at, how would we subsidize that 173,000 after three years? Are we then again going to go back and have to look for a different funding source for that amount?
That's an excellent question. Here's the best way I can address that. You'll recall that I'm on a work group that the County Board of Commissioners established that recommended that millage and served as the genesis for getting that on, on the ballot. I believe, because that group still meets, I believe that we will likely be asking for a renewal of that, an extension beyond the initial five years. Again, nothing's written in stone. The County Board of Commissioners may not accept, they may reject that recommendation, but that would be my understanding, is that we will seek an extension of that half a mil for roads and non-motorized pathways.
I know if you've got your crystal ball up tonight, I mean, how do you think that would go? If we pass our own millage and then you try to get a renewal of another millage, I mean, we feel like there would be, has there been any discussion about that, that they would be up against a wall? I mean, I think people bought into, yes, we're going to fix the roads, but now if you go into separate communities and Celine does a road millage, and then you've got a county one on top of that, you're going to ask for renewal.
That's another good question. I can tell you this, Ann Arbor, the city of Ann Arbor has and has had for a number of years a, a road millage. And I believe it's in excess of one mil. I want to say off the top of my head, Councilwoman Dylan, it's closer to two. And yet, the county proposal still, still passed, passed overwhelmingly in the city of Ann Arbor. I would also say, somewhat anecdotal, but from the conversation I have with elected officials and residents who live in some of the outlining townships, they have really seen value and benefit from this, this half a mil passing. There are a number of county roads that were in absolutely deplorable condition that were able to be fast-tracked because of this infusion of additional cash. So at this juncture, assuming nothing changes, I think there is still broad support for the county millage.
Okay. Thank you. Now I'll switch to this end of the table. I know. Sorry. Act 51 dollars, are those perpetual? I mean, are they--
I mean, I, what I'm trying to figure out is, are we building a plan on numbers that are just arbitrary for the most part, that we could change by the time we even--
Right.
--this plan in place?
Act 51, and maybe Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but Act 51 is what we get from the state for the proceeds from the sales tax on the gas and stuff like that. Now, that's where Brian mentioned that the state could change to give us, you know, try to find something else, which we've had a couple different programs come down the pike. We did get an additional source of funding for this year. But I don't think, I don't know what the legislation is behind Act 51. We've got it as long as I've been here. I know that. That's 30-some years.
If I could, so Act 51 has been around for the last few decades, and very so often, the state legislature talks about changing the formula--
Right.
--and nothing happens.
I know, well, that was what I was going to say, is I know when we were at the Capitol Conference, there was a lot of chatter about, oh, we're going to reconfigure this, and we're going to call it something different.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, yeah, I'm not going to sit here and say, well, no, that's never going to happen. All I can say is, what has happened historically is they talk about it, and nothing happens. So, no, that could change tomorrow, but--
Okay. Okay. And then my last question is, is there a way to determine or to distinguish on these charts what are local roads versus major streets?
Not, no, not on these charts. This is a total system analysis.
Right. So do you know what, like, a ballpark percentage is of our roads?
Both streets did, or deteriorated both streets, because we was in major streets for, we actually, and active, this, that's why-- Excuse me. That's why the major, that's, that's why the major street revenues are three times the local street revenues per Act 51. But we leverage funds to get as much funding as possible through federal state grants. We can only use those on what's called the NHS system, National Highway System, and it's a category that qualifies only because of the amount of commercial and residential traffic and what it serves, like industrial parks, schools, commercial areas, and our all-season truck routes. So local streets suffer because revenue isn't there for the local streets. So I would venture to gain maybe 80% or more of the heavily deteriorated streets are residential streets built in the 90s, and they are about to turn over, you might say, and need a restoration quite a bit over the next several years.
So, but you don't have a percentage of what out of our 70, 20 miles?
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but it is--
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to--
The major street network is much smaller mile-wise than the local street network.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dylan. Mr. Girba?
Not too many questions. Similar to how the mayor approached this, I was just taking the $900,000 and backing off the revenues that we had in there to get to about a $526,000 shortfall, and not necessarily knowing of that 526, what would come from grants, because in there, and I don't know what our average amount is getting every year in terms of grant funding either. So to help tweak that, I'm looking at, like, that about a mil, maybe a mil.25 that we would need to support, depending on what our average grant money is. But I do know that, as Mr. Rubel had mentioned, leveraging all that-- But I do know that, as Mr. Ruble had mentioned, leveraging all that money for the major streets is where we really have to continue feeding the money, and otherwise, we're going to get behind on them. And then actually having this kind of mill will add to that. The half-mill or almost half-mill that we currently have in place is serving as debt service for roads. When does that end? I hate to put you on the spot about that, but it isn't that long out, is it?
Um, yeah. It's one time second, and I will look it up.
Why don't you look up, why don't you look up that, Mr. Gearbock, who has the next question?
Um, I think, the only other thing was, my question was, in terms of maintenance, the six-hundred-thousand, and of course, the four-hundred-thousand of that six-hundred-thousand that's used for maintenance. When we have the fund balance carry forward, are we pretty well spending four-hundred-thousand dollars a year out of that? Are we wiping out our main, our major street fund every year? So, whatever money comes in, we don't have a small dollar amount that's carrying over, we're primarily using all of it? Seems like we've had a fund balance that we've carried forward, but I didn't know how far we're getting to.
Yeah, there is a little bit of a fund balance in major streets. Yeah, it's on the CIP documents.
The projected fund balance, under CIP documents, there's a billion. Oh, we're eating away, I mean, what, what specifically is happening is, we did the CIP in major streets, and we transferred it over to local services. We're not using it every year, because we have to get the design engineering in, you know, it's still a lot of weight there, so.
So, really understanding that schedule is a little bit more for me. Okay, got it. And the other thing, when you mentioned Act Fifty-One, and we've already said, sorry, the source is federal money, isn't it? A lot of it, or is it all state?
It was gas and ta-
Our gas and tax, right?
Yeah, gas and we tax.
There isn't any contribution from federal into that, so anything above and beyond that's always part of our own.
Right. It's, it's, it's federal.
I didn't know if they transferred any, some federal money into it, they always mix around with it, depending on what it is, so, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bennett, you're still looking up that question he has about, about-
The only reason why I mentioned that is because if that's coming up fairly soon, replacing that with a new millage is basically just, you know, replacing what we currently have in place.
Yeah.
Yep, so the-
Twenty-one, twenty-four.
Yeah, so, in a few years, so, not that bad.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Mayor Pratim Tar.
Thank you. Most of my questions have been answered. Just what, just to be sure, when we're talking about, that I understood correctly, when we're talking about whatever amount of money per year here, we're talking about design work as well as the construction. That is, the preliminary, we norm, so normally, we have one year, there's all of the design at, work that happens, and the following year, the construction happens. So, both of those are covered in the totals we're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, that was it. Everything else has already been answered.
You good for now? Excellent.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. McCollum.
I think that all of mine have been answered, so.
Get it easy.
Easy for me, I appreciate it.
Additional questions from the dais? Additional comments from staff? Mr. Ruble, make sure you get the microphone.
Well, Jeff's been working arduously on the SAW grant, asset management plans with Tetra Tech, and of course, I get, I get to sit in on some of those and give them some inputs. But the SAW grant itself, and Jeff could testify to that, will generate a large number of either water or sanitary sewer projects that need to be replaced due to their conditions or, or age or deficiency of capacity. To give an example of a real current trend here, is that when we submitted for a Category F grant on Maple Road, you know, the worst part of Maple Road, we found through the SAW grant, the preliminary findings were in the modeling that we have a deficient sewer capacity there, which is needed to service north of Maple Road and new development. So, when you put that into a Category F grant, you also have to have the sewer funds. Sewer funds in, in turn, work with the Category F and our matching grant to cover the whole project cost, at least what's in the influence of the trench. So, we are, we have to, we're forced to, and we always have, intermingled utility funds with street projects, because you need to have a whole comprehensive project, and they do work together.
Thank you for that. Ms. Bennett, anything else?
The only other thing that I would just say, that, it's after, you know, we've been working with the city attorney on our options, and we've had this discussion many a times. So, to be able to go out and do what should basically be a charter amendment would give us the authority that we could levy up to, however much. But that would be part of our budget process that we reviewed each year. So, in the event that the state changed the formula and suddenly we had all this gas tax money coming in and we didn't need to levy, you know, that's, that's part of our annual budget process, would be able to say how much we would need to levy for streets each fiscal year.
Appreciate that. That's good, that's good information to be cognizant of. You, did you, because I know we addressed this on Thursday, did you get clarification from bond counsel as to whether or not a potential ballot proposal, that that tax revenue could, could be collected during winter taxes?
They all have to be levied with your, in the summer.
Okay.
Yes, we did get clarification.
Okay. Let me jump to Councilwoman Dillon first, Kristin, then I'll jump back to you. She had her hand up first.
That's okay. Just very quickly, this is from Mr. Fordice. Your software or paper, is there a suggestion as to where we should be? Like, where do we follow the overall picture?
Um, I think our, our current four-and-a-half average is slightly better than average statewide. In terms of a goal, I, I think the, you know, being solidly at the bottom of the good, so like, seven, six-and-a-half, seven, is, that's a fairly practical and serviceable goal. To, to get much above that, you really are cranking in the dollars and need to spend a lot of time on construction. You have everything under construction almost all the time. So, you could, if you look at the, the top line on each of these, the ten category, as I mentioned earlier, a road can only be a ten for one year. So, in the nine-hundred-thousand-dollar scenario, we're basically paving two miles a year. In the one-point-two-five, we're paving three miles a year, and doing some other techniques, you know. The way our roads are right now, and the way these models worked out, the vast majority of this money is on full reconstructs, where we're removing everything and building a new base and, and all-new asphalt. In years out, further than this, ten years, we'll start getting more into mill and fills, where we take off two inches of asphalt and put two inches back. You have a nice new surface, it rides great, and it lasts, because we've put the money in underneath, it lasts, you know, for, for a good long time. So, I, I feel that this six-and-a-half goal is, will, I feel like everyone will feel, except for the poor folks who live on those last sixteen miles of roads, the, the impression of our road network will be that this is a good road network.
Well, I know that Michigan kind of sets the bar pretty low. So, I was just trying to-
Lowest in the region.
So, um, okay, um, I'll stop there. Go ahead, Ms. Bennett.
I just want clarification from Ms. Bennett.
You were in the statement previous, we can levy up to a certain amount if we had a change in the situation, and I didn't hear a statement.
Repeat, sure. So, the charter amendment would say that would, the voters would authorize, this is just very vague, right? But the voters would literally, would authorize the levy up to whatever we put in there. So, with Brian's proposal, let's say, one mill. And then each year, during our budget process, when we're going through exactly like we are now and, and seeing what we have, if we have additional funds that are coming in from a county or the federal government, levies more funds, we wouldn't have to levy that full mill, is what I was trying to say.
Another question, please.
Just Janet's comments kind of put this in my head, but is there any thought that there are new technologies that are coming across that would affect that number ten years out, that, that a road might be cheaper to build, or that would last longer, that would affect, you know, let's say, three years, there's a new technology that comes on board that, that might affect the, the road ten years down the way, that it wouldn't have to be?
I haven't seen anything that would dramatically reduce the, the cost of construction. There are a number of things that are just coming into use now, and, and some things that are proposed that should make them last longer.
Okay.
So, you know, some, some installation details, some new materials that kind of address weak spots in roads. So, as we roll those into our paving system, we'll get more years out of the roads, they, they won't cost less, but on a per-year basis, they'll cost less.
Okay. Good.
Let me jump to Mr. Gearbock, he had his hand up first, Mr. Ruble, then we'll jump to, back to you.
Yeah, and just a couple of my questions, and understanding too, is that we don't necessarily address the taxable value growth that's going to be happening too, so that could help offset some of our operating budget. I'd ask for that kind of information, just so that when we ask for a millage increase, we really do need the funds that we're not really employing somewhere else. Only a couple observations. Recently, there was a state survey, there was information that was out there today. Unfortunately, at the state level, it said that sixty-seven percent of the respondents didn't want to vote for a tax to increase on the roads. So, we need to become a model ourselves, so from the perspective of people looking at it from the overall state, they don't want to pay more taxes. So, we're looking at here saying, well, yeah, we want to pay more taxes, but I don't know how else we're going to meet what people really expect without raising taxes. And so, when we look at this, that's why I raise this issue about the taxable value growth, is really trying to figure out where do we need to place ourselves. And I do like the fact that you mentioned that we can request a one-mill and upraise it up and down between that one-mill. I don't want to go too, any more than that. I think two mills at this point, and anything else is just going to get people a little antsy, especially with this November potentially being a vote that we hope makes a lot of changes.
Mr. Ruble, did you have a quick comment?
Well, we did recognize and start in nineteen thirteen that there were candidates of street, to their pavement structure and subgrade, that were good candidates for geotextile fabric, reinforcing mats between the pavement layers. So, we did that on Saline River Drive, a section of, of North Woodland Drive, because they exhibited particular characteristics that needed reinforcement. And then in twenty-fourteen, on the Northern Arbor Projects. Those are good candidates for the fabric. The fabric holds the pavement together, it seals up the street from water penetration and failure to the cracks, and really, really helps the street. So, there are good candidates for that material.
Just for the record, when you started your statement, you said nineteen thirteen. I think you meant two thousand thirteen.
Well-
Gary, you've been here a long time, but not that long.
I don't think that data or assessment from a hundred and, yeah, a hundred-plus years would be particularly relevant or useful at this point, but-
Seems like it's-
Just teasing you, Mr. Ruble, thank you for that comment. Mr. Gearbock, did you have something further?
No, I, when he mentioned twenty thirteen, I was going to ask, which section of Northern Arbor Street, but it's the portion that goes from, what, Bennett North?
Yeah.
Bennett North, twenty-fourteen. That was federally brought in.
The T-ball.
It's state-certified, we accepted it. No, I just, because I know that potentially, if we're going to have to tear up something going south of that section, that's where it's going to be a little bit more worrying. Thanks.
Let me, let me say a few things, and the, the cat's out of the bag, I'm sorry. Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, if you have a question, please.
Thank you, just, just for clarification, when we're talking about these numbers, does this include infrastructure, or is this actually just the road? Is this the infrastructure under it also? So, this is just the road? So, we still have to fund everything under it separately? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss that.
Those would be funded through the county range.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Except for storm sewer?
Storm sewer is a street.
Okay, that's what I learned.
To kind of be serious and not so serious, depends who you talk to, so, so, there's one or two communities that, that actually, you know, are neighbor to the north, has a storm sewer tax. There are, however, last night, the court said, you can't. Jackson, I believe Jackson did, and then they, I know, the last conversation, it's been a while, but the conversation I had with our city attorneys obviously is that currently, there is no enabled legislation for communities to do that.
So, but I mean, that's the thing, storm sewer is going to be coming out of our-
General.
General fund.
Unless we, right, unless we go a different direction, but yes, that would be, that's current projects, correct?
So, none of this millage that we approved could be used for that purpose?
Well, I think, depending on the project itself, I mean, that's, so we, for instance, you know, when we put in sidewalks, or, you know, we can add those to-
Right, sidewalks, I understand. I just, the actual storm sewers, wherever we had to repair or replace those.
I mean, it depends on how you write the millage language, of course, you know, so if you want to write it so that it includes, I don't know, non-utility underground infrastructure, you know, something like that.
I mean, part of the reason why I'm saying that, that this rationalizes out more, we're not getting money, additional money out of our operating funds to help pay for even that cost.
Trying to figure out whether that storm sewer is not part of this village, so they have to, you know, the other thing is, we're going to have to-
Right.
And that was a comment.
Please.
That was a comment from, you know, the city attorney, is that you would need to make sure you word that so that it could go for str, uh, infrastructure, underground infrastructure, excluding the utilities, because that had to be paid through the utility rate, so that we could use it for the storm sewer and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Those costs for storm sewer, to your point, which is a good point, but those are not included in, in these numbers that Mr.-
Right, I know, and that's why I want to make sure that, we, we, we know we got a bill out there for the road, but when we rip up that road, there's reasons for fixing the storm sewers and stuff, so those roads don't deteriorate even further.
Precisely, yes.
Which is one of the examples of Southern Arbor Street, if we think the storm sewer will be sewer there, so.
Okay, so the cat is a little bit out of the bag here, but let me, let me share some perspective, and let me express my opinion, and we can use that as a starting off point in two weeks' time, when, when I attempt to develop consensus on this issue. So, first, let me say that, you know, I, I approach this matter trying to find balance between meeting a critical need, which is funding our road and infrastructure projects, while at the same time, trying to maintain affordability in the community. And I'm cognizant of the fact that in recent years, there's been sort of a piling on of, of millage and tax requests on, on, on our ballots of late. And this is, and I make this point a lot, this is simple dot connecting. This is a result of the state not assuming basic responsibilities. And it, it's, it's not accidental. I, I think that Washtenaw County overall is a pretty progressive community, and our citizens see value in, in certain government services, and they're willing, willing to fund them robustly. So, noting that, I came to the conclusion that one-mill would be appropriate. Again, that would generate approximately four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. When you add that to the one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand that we received from Washtenaw County, and approximately, actually, a little less than one-third of the six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand that we received through, through Act Fifty-One dollars for major streets, that gets us to just over eight-hundred-thousand. And of course, this would not prevent us from utilizing federal or state grants, or siphoning off a portion of our unrestricted fund balance, which is what we're doing this year, which I thought was appropriate and, and prudent. So, again, that eight-hundred-thousand gets us somewhere between maintain and improve, but much closer to, to improve. It would be my preference that this be put on the November ballot, and that the duration of the millage be a relatively short period of time, probably five years, with the understanding being that we would likely ask for a renewal. And if the situation, the facts on the ground have not changed and evolved, and we're still receiving the same amount of revenue for roads from the state that we are today, then if we deliver quality products to our citizens and they see value in it, then potentially, they would be in a, a position to approve a larger amount. But again, trying to find balance between maintaining affordability, while also investing in a, in a critical component of, of, of local government, which is infrastructure maintenance, I came up with, with one-mill. Again, my recommendation or my opinion would be to put it on the November ballot for a five-year period. I'll also note, and Ms. Bennett, you can remind us how much excess levy capacity we have currently with our general, with our operating millage.
Um, I believe it's just under two mills.
Okay. Okay, so, again, the, the possibility exists that we could always raise our millage rate to, to fund road projects, however, I think we would be missing an opportunity to engage with the people we represent and to ask them if this is really something that they see value in. And based on the conversations I've had, based on the conversations that Councilwoman Mitchell has shared with us and others, I think most of our constituents do see value in, in robustly funding road maintenance projects. So, again, I just offer that for consideration. I would like to revisit this in two weeks' time, which gives you ample opportunity to raise additional questions or concerns, or to request further information from, from city staff, of course, directing those through the city manager's office. Additional points or questions?
Just one point, question, of course, we bring this money onboard and increase all our construction, are we staffed to handle that kind of increase in management of those projects? Because that's my biggest fear, that you bring all this money onboard and do this, but we don't end up doing it.
Mr. Fordyce, do you want to address that?
I think through strategic use of consultants and contractors, that at this level of investment, that, that we can handle that. It'd be a little bit of a stretch, I believe, but, you know.
The more it is the Ann Arbor, or, I shouldn't say, the Michigan Avenue project, which really took a lot of, for that entire year.
Right.
I'm thinking if we add on this kind of construction projects, we're going to have that kind of demand.
Yeah, it won't be quite that significant, but it'll be significant, and, you know, we will have to rely on our, our consultants and contract inspectors and kind of change that model a little bit. Back prior to the, you know, the tax revenue crash, we used to do, for several years in a row, is with bond funding and utility funding, we were doing projects in the roughly billion-dollar-a-year range. We did have more staff back then.
That's why I want to make sure that we're covering.
But, so, you know, so, yeah, so we, we know how to do it, we are, we don't have as many people as we did back then, but I think with, like I said, use of consultants and contractors, we can handle it.
If I may, I do want to make one more comment, because of course, as I mentioned earlier, I was not, was not able to be present at the previous meeting you all had when you discussed road and infrastructure projects, but I do want to applaud you as a group for determining, and I believe it was unanimous, that the preferred route is pay-as-you-go as opposed to incurring additional debt, and that signifies a pretty significant paradigm shift from where we were in the past. And while that forces all of us to endure some pain short-term, in terms of the long-term viability of, of the organization, I think that's extremely wise and prudent, and I think our constituents, our residents ought to know that. I think, and I'm not speaking so much locally, but as I look, as I look statewide and nationally, I think we all have enough debt on our shoulders, and so if we can fund vital services in a, in a more appropriate, responsible way, I think, I think that's ideal.
Mayor Merrill, just to confirm, as of June 30th, 2017, we had 1.48 excess capacity. Millage rate will be staying the same, so.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions for staff or comments? Again, we'll revisit this issue as a discussion item at the end of our next regular council meeting in two weeks. Thank you, and again, if you have questions, concerns, you request additional information, please direct those inquiries through the city manager's office. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 7:25 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protemtahar, was that seconded by Councilwoman Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have, this meeting is adjourned.